Alrighty, good morning, Thursday, February 18th. We are pleased to welcome you to the Town Meeting Program brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local cellphone provider that provides your local talk show. And we are talking about very local topics with the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. Kathy Renfelt and Kristi Banks are both here with us for this. And we're going to talk about the upcoming Candidate Forum, the upcoming Chamber Annual Meeting, and sort of a sneak peek at what to expect for shorebird. So, thanks to Cordova Wireless Communications. We are eager to begin the Town Meeting Talk Show and glad to have you listening. Hope you enjoy. So Kristi, let's dive in first to the annual meeting, which is a very important time for the Chamber and the membership. What is the plan for making that work in these pandemic times?
Well, we decided to get innovative this year. Understandably, it's hard to get a room full of people together safely. So, we are going virtual. I mean, as a community, we're kind of used to virtual. And we're really working hard to make sure that this virtual annual meeting is not just going to be another boring meeting that everyone sits there and stares at and tunes out. We're having quite a few fun things happening within that meeting. The first one I'm excited about is our Dress to Promote Contest. So, we're asking all of our attendees to show up virtually to our meeting wearing gear or garb or anything from their favorite Cordova businesses. And we're going to see, we're going to see who can promote Cordova businesses the best.
Okay, so would it be gear from their own business or any business of their choice? Or is it just kind of creativity up to the end user?
It is creativity up to the end user. So, they could promote their own business or someone else's. Or, or they can just put on everything they have from all the businesses they support and love.
Okay, what else is on the agenda?
We will also have a Chamber Challenge Trivia Game. So, we are going to be putting out some trivia questions about the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. And we're encouraging people who want to attend that meeting to head over to our website and our Facebook page and study up a little bit, brush up on that knowledge about the Cordova Chamber. Our Cordova Chamber of Commerce website is cordovachamber.com. And our Facebook address is facebook.com/cordovachamber.
Okay, now can people just show up, you know, just, just join into the meeting? Or do they need to register somehow and let you guys know they're going to participate?
Yes, we do have a registration if they want to participate. The meeting is going to be virtual via Zoom, so they would need a link for that. And in order to register, they would need to go to cordovachamber.com/annualmeeting. Or they could email us at info@cordovachamber.com. Or they can head over to our website events page. And that's cordovachamber.com/events to go ahead and register for that. If, if someone wants to watch the meeting, but they don't want to register or be on the Zoom meeting themselves, they can tune into our Facebook and we will be streaming that live for the entire community to see.
Okay, so, but if you want to compete in the contests or give, offer any comments or ask questions, that kind of thing, then you'll want to be on the Zoom side of things because Facebook is not two-way. So, Cordova Chamber, you said cordovachamber.com/annualmeeting to get the Zoom link?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy, anything to add so far as far as this part of the annual meeting discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm excited for this version of the annual meeting. I think this is very 2020, what we're doing right now. But we're trying to make it fun and exciting and take it up a notch from just the normal boring Zoom meetings that we're probably all zoomed out from. So, you, there's, as Kristi said, there's lots of ways to get more information about the annual meeting. And we're going to talk some more about it here in a minute. But if you guys are listening and you have your phone handy, you can just go to Facebook and go to our Cordova Chamber Facebook page. And on the events area there, you can click on events and that'll bring you to a couple of events that we have coming up and you'll want to click on the annual meeting one. And that'll give you all the information, the links, how to RSVP and all of that information right there. Or like Kristi said, cordovachamber.com/annual-meeting. Or you can go to the cordovachamber.com/events and then scroll through the calendar for this meeting. And it's on February 23rd, which is this coming Tuesday. And it's at 6:30 PM. And we picked that time so that people would have time to get home from work, grab some food, and then settle in and tune in. And we're hoping to kind of keep it contained within an hour.
Okay.
Hour and a half, max.
All right, so again, just by, the easiest thing to do would be to go to the Cordova Chamber website or the Facebook page, and there'll be pretty obvious ways, even on those cover pages, right, to navigate your way to being able to register?
Yeah, there's, you know, from the cover page of the Cordova Chamber website, you just click on events at the top. And then a calendar will pop up and you'll see annual meeting as one of the events. And then you'll just click on that.
Okay, Kristi, what, in terms of the business that's going to be conducted, what are the plans for, for the formal agenda?
So, obviously, this is a meeting for the Chamber of Commerce. We're, we're putting everything out there to the public, to our members, to our board, and talking a lot about what we have worked on over the last year to support our community and our businesses. So, we will be having our board members present their annual reports. And it's just generally an overview of everything that took place in 2020. And then moving through that, we'll be giving everyone a sneak peek about, about what we're going to be doing in 2021.
You guys have been a definite force in the, in the midst of the pandemic too. Some really, I think, innovative and forward-thinking and, and hopeful, in a lot of ways, ideas as we dealt with, you know, what for our businesses has got to be the most challenging year since the oil spill. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't live in Cordova when the spill happened, so that's just a guess. But, you know, maybe even more challenging than that, I don't know. But it really, I have to say again, what remarkable work was done. So, it'll be interesting to hear what's in those, what's in those reports. Now, what else is, is going to be on the agenda?
You know, I love how you mentioned the resiliency of our community and how it's been a hard year because we want to take some time and recognize our businesses who have done an amazing job at staying open or being creative about serving the community. So, we're going to have, we're going to have business awards this year. Some people might have read that we hadn't, we were accepting nominations for the Come Back Better Award. We have a good list of nominees. So, we will be issuing awards for our Come Back Better Award. We will have an award for our Chamber Champion. And two awards in Business Excellence, as well as an award for Community Outreach. So, we're going to be reaching out to our nominees very shortly and at our annual meeting announcing who will be winning those awards.
Okay, will there be some board elections this time or is anybody's seat up?
Yes, we actually have four open seats this year. And we have six candidates running for those four seats. So, we are, we're doing our voting before the meeting this year. And anyone, anyone who is a current member for 2021 can vote for who they would like to be seated on our board.
Okay, and, and so you say it's, it's not being done in person like it usually is, obviously. What's the process? How do people get a ballot? And when do they do and how do they turn it in and so on?
Yes, so we did mail out ballots to all of our current members back at the beginning of February. They can mail those back to us or bring them to the Chamber Office Monday through Friday between 10:00 and 3:00. If, if a business wants to be able to vote, they can, they can become a member or renew their membership and they can pick up a ballot at the Chamber Office and, and fill it out and give it back to us. And then we'll be counting, we'll be counting those ballots the morning of the election. So, the ballots are due by February 22nd and the results are going to be announced at the board meeting.
Okay, and you mentioned too, something that will be interesting about this meeting is that, you know, while typically, I mean, the Chamber is a membership organization and most of what is done is for the benefit of members. But your, this, this meeting is going to be very public, very wide open, huh?
Yes, the annual meeting is intended for all businesses. It's, it's a way for us to put our message out into the community, to show, to show the business community what we do for them. It's, it's a great way to get the community involved in running businesses in Cordova and understanding everything that the business community puts back into, into Cordova, which is just wonderful. We think it's a great opportunity for all of us to come together, to get on the same page. And especially during a pandemic where maybe we're all sharing ideas together and working to come back better together. I think it's just a powerful thing to open up that meeting to anyone who wants to attend or watch.
Yeah, well, and it's, I mean, this is, this has been a year for changing the, the way that we traditionally think about a lot of different things. So, it could be, you know, the, the inspiration for one of the businesses out there that hasn't participated. And again, if a business isn't a member, there's still time to become one. If I heard you right, you can become a member and be able to vote and, and participate as a member. But to, you know, really have a chance to rethink your business model. You guys have been helping folks with that, that, you know, they not only would have an opportunity to come back from the pandemic restrictions, but, but to do so in new and innovative ways that'll make them even more successful than they were before.
Absolutely, yeah.
Kathy, any, anything to add at this point to the, the business, to the agenda side of what's coming in the annual meeting?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Kristi said, that it's, you know, one of the reasons that we have this meeting open to the public and not just to our members is that the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, while we are a membership organization, we're a nonprofit membership organization, we're separate from the city. And that's a misconception that a lot of people have. We're not part of the city's structure. We're a separate nonprofit membership organization. And we have really specific goals and we partner with a lot of organizations like the city to get a lot of works done and they're a very strong partner of ours. But the work that we do, it's definitely there to support businesses, but it's also to enhance quality of life for residents. So, even if you're not a business owner, there's work that we do that will, that affects you. And hopefully, people know that already because they know of all the events that we put on, like the Shorebird Festival and Fungus Festival and the holiday kickoff and, and things like that. But maybe they, they weren't aware that that's why we do it. We do it to, to make sure that you, as a resident, feel like Cordova is the place that you want to be. And there's lots of benefits to having residents stay in Cordova and not move away. And one of them is that we have enough support from all of the tax structure to get those roads plowed and get those fires put out and get those police on the street to keep everyone safe and keep the hospital running and keep the school open with enough students. So, all of that is kind of wrapped into what we do. And it's all affected by, by the work that we do and all the partners that we work with. So, we're excited to have this meeting available for people to kind of, even if they're not a business, even if they never thought that they were really part of what the Chamber was doing or affected by what the Chamber's doing, to kind of see how they fit in to, to the puzzle and how we fit into their life here. And, and if they want to have a comment and, and say something, they can. If they want to join, even if they're not a business owner, you can join as a member. And our memberships are annual and they start as low as $50 a year. And we actually, because of the pandemic, we've offered an across-the-board 30% discount on all of our memberships this year, if you want it. So, that $50 membership turns into $35 that you pay for the whole year to be a Chamber member. And that money would go to support the work that we do to help keep Cordova safe and economically viable and fun for, for everybody and to help keep those businesses strong so that we can keep going and, and find ways to make Cordova an even better place to live and visit and work.
Sure, well, and too, the Chamber is very often a first point of contact for new people coming in who want to find out about Cordova. And I'm sure you've played a role in, in attracting people to considering Cordova as somewhere that they can live and, and work. So, I mean, there's that component, there's the travel component. The visitor industry hasn't exactly been robust lately, but when that comes back, you, you guys are right on the front lines there as well. What kind of office hours are there these days, by the way?
We are typically open Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay, and taking phone calls still, I assume? You mentioned like if people want to, to contact you about how to register for the meeting or anything, you mentioned email, but still a phone number too or an email?
Yes, our phone number is 424-7260.
Okay, we're speaking with Kathy and Kristi from the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, the annual meeting. What was the date of that again, by the way?
That is February 23rd, next Tuesday.
February 23rd. And then another thing that is kind of a big deal is coming up on Friday, the 19th. And that is the Cordova Candidate Forum, which was spearheaded by the Chamber. And then they brought in some partners to make that happen. So Kathy, why don't we have you take this one on now? What's, what, what's, what's going to be happening with this forum?
Thanks, JR. Yeah, so we actually had several community members reach out to us at the Chamber asking us if we would consider hosting a candidate forum because there are some, some good seats up for reelection and there's some competition for those seats. You know, two, two folks are competing for each of the city council seats. And then there's seven people, I believe, on the ballot for school board. So, they, these folks wanted a, you know, just a place where they could get kind of broad-based information on all the candidates. So, at the Chamber, we reached out to you at Cordova Radio, KLM, KC TV. And we also reached out to the Cordova Times and we all decided to co-host this event, which I'm super grateful for. I could not have, have put this on without you and Zach. So, thanks so much to both of you for helping make this possible. I'm excited for, for you to kind of be the, to ask the questions and kind of keep everything flowing throughout, throughout the meeting because you're very good at that. It's going to be this Friday, February 19th. And we're going to be hosting that from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And people can catch that on Facebook Live. So, that would be the Cordova Chambers Facebook page. I just added an event to our Facebook page. So, you could go to facebook.com/cordovachamber or just in the search bar, put in Cordova Chamber of Commerce on Facebook and you'll come to our page. Or you could search for Cordova Candidate Forum because that event is out there too. And if you follow the Cordova Chamber Facebook page or you say that you're going to that event, then Facebook will make sure that you are reminded when it's coming up and that you're alerted when that it's about to go live so that you can tune in. And if folks aren't on Facebook or they don't catch it on time, then they can tune into KLM and KC TV. Correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be airing in on Monday, the 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Right, right. And because it's a Zoom meeting and the challenge of opening that full-on wide to the community, these will, it's not going to be an open forum with questions from the public. Although all of us that have worked on forming the questions have curated those based on things that we've heard from people in different segments of the community and we had to kind of average those together. So, whether you catch it Friday or hear it on the radio, it'll be basically the same experience. So, if somebody's busy Friday, then, then we'll have, we'll have that as a backup. Not to mention the fact, if, every time you do a Facebook Live, Kathy, doesn't it automatically archive and become available on demand on the Facebook page?
It does, yes. So, so if you don't catch it as it's happening live, you can go back later to our Facebook page, to the Cordova Chamber Facebook page, and it should be there as a saved video that you can watch at any time.
How's our turnout looking?
Right now, we have, all of the city council members have said that they plan to attend. And, and I should say the city council candidates, so four of them. And then all of the school board candidates are planning to attend. And I'm waiting to hear back from the CCMC board candidates.
Okay, all right. And as you said, we're, there are three of us involved. We've got the newspaper, the radio stations and the Chamber. And, and it sounds like you kind of covered the, the basics of what the goal is, just so everybody has an equal opportunity to introduce themselves and speak to some key issues. I want to particularly tip the hat to Zach over at the Times for, for kind of taking point on coming up with the questions. And Kathy and I both had some input on that as well. And I think we've got a good, a good list of questions. And, and it should be, it should be, you know, as informative as, as one where people attended in person, with the exception, again, that just logistically, there really isn't a good way to pipe in questions from the public. But on the flip side of that, these candidates are always available to the public if there's something that you want to ask them specifically. So, you know, with their phone numbers and cell phones and emails. And I don't know if they, probably some of them have Facebook pages as well. So, there are a lot of ways if, if you're interested. Any other thoughts on the forum, Kathy?
I'm just excited for this opportunity for these candidates to, to have a moment to, to talk and to introduce themselves, like you said. I think a lot of people are interested in the local election this year. I think that politics has been on a lot of people's minds, that being a national election year this year as well. And just with all kinds of things going on in that way, I think it'll be good for us to, to hear everyone together and to realize maybe that we're not all so different. And maybe that there's, there's ways where we can, you know, find, find common ground with, with, with pretty much everybody. Or maybe there's ways that, that distinguish one candidate from another for you that's, that you find is, is more important than you thought. So, hopefully, this will kind of be opening and, and a positive experience for everybody.
Okay, so Friday, the 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 on Facebook Live. It'll be archived on Facebook after it's done. We're going to put it on the radio Monday, the 22nd at 5:00. And maybe it'll, if, if we don't, if I don't end up using any music that's copyright issue, then we might be able to put it on our YouTube channel as well. We'll, we'll see how that goes. YouTube is a, is a strange animal when it comes to that kind of thing. But again, definitely Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 via the Chambers Facebook Live or on the radio Monday, the 22nd at 5:00 PM. Kathy and Kristi are our guests on this Town Meeting Program. And something else that is going to be different again this year, of course, but the Chamber doesn't say, well, this is a drag. They say, hey, well, we're going to figure out a way to make it magic. And, and who knows how many interesting things will come of it? Is the 2021 Hybrid Shorebird Festival. So, Kristi, let's go back to you maybe on that one. What's, how's that going to work when, you know, with masks and travel restrictions and six feet apart and so on?
You know, thankfully, we've learned a lot over the last year in terms of COVID-19 and safety precautions and what, what works for our community. And it's really exciting that we're able to introduce this as a hybrid festival. We're going to have a lot of the same free virtual events as we did last year. So, people can join us from wherever they are perched around the world.
Perched, I see what you did there.
So, you know, so we're going to have some of those same virtual events. We're going to be having presenters and speakers. But we've also learned that birding outside is a very safe activity. It's one of the safer activities that people can partake in. And it's healthy to get outside and get exercise and fresh air. So, because of that, we're able to welcome in-state visitors and those from out of state who follow the testing and social distancing guidelines. So, we're encouraging our Cordovans to get out there.
Okay, what are some of the, you know, some of the benefits of, of people participating?
Well, we are doing something a little different this year. For everyone who registers for the Shorebird Festival, they are going to be receiving a care package. And that's going to have some, some really nice goodies and swag in it. And we're finding ways for our local businesses to be supportive just because we know that we're not going to have the same amount of people flying in as we have had historically. We want to promote our businesses and help them, help them make a little income on the, on the people coming in, the people registering. So, we're working to put together iHeart Cordova boxes and hopefully putting things in there from our local businesses that people can upgrade and pay for and, and take home as part of the Cordova Shorebird experience. So, we're, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to continue supporting the businesses while creating an experience when maybe, you know, we just have to be innovative.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the Chamber has been certainly a shining star, if not the shining star in, in doing that. And I'm wondering how people would register if they want to get in on some of the additional benefits?
Absolutely, registration is going to be opening next week. And our website is coppershorebird.com. So, you can head right over to the, to the website and register. Or you can also go to our Copper Shorebird website and join the festival email list and receive all of the latest news and updates before they're published to everyone else.
All right, it's always funner to be special. Kathy, anything to add about shorebird?
Yeah, you know, very excited about Shorebird Festival this year because like Kristi said, we're, we're still going to be doing a lot of the virtual stuff we did last year, which we did some new things that we've never done before last year. We, we actually did some live broadcasts from, you know, folks that were out on airboats, airboats on Algenic Slough. We did some, some really cool online classes with speakers that we probably never could have gotten if they had to actually fly here. We had people participate in the festival from all over the world that would not have been able to participate normally if it was something that was only done in person. Because as we all know, it takes a little bit of doing to get to Cordova and not everyone can manage that. So, by offering the, the parts of the festival virtually, again, that we did last year, we're continuing to leave that door open for those people who can't physically get here, whether it be because of COVID-19 or whether it just, they just can't afford to get here or they just can't travel that far. We're kind of leaving that door open for them to also experience this festival, to experience Cordova, to get a taste of what our unique community and, and unique ecosystem is like here. And maybe that will have an impact on them in the future. Maybe that'll have an impact for those people to, in the future, support our communities in, in strange and interesting ways. So, that's kind of one of the, you know, COVID silver linings of this whole thing is that we actually got a broader base of participation in our virtual festival. So, we're trying to have the best of both worlds here. We're going to continue that virtual side and then we're going to slowly add back in this in-person side. And the in-person side is going to have, you know, some, some specifics about it. So, what we're doing is we're inviting people to come up here and go bubble birding. So, you would come up here in your bubble. So, let's say that there's a family of four and a family of two that have decided to bubble up and they live in Anchorage and they want to come to Cordova for Shorebird Festival. Okay, well, you come, you know, come, come on in and fly in and wear your mask as you fly and follow all those rules. And if you've gotten your vaccine already, great. If you've gotten a test recently, great. If, if not, then you just, you have to do your, your strict social distancing, which means that you hang out in your bubble. And that, that social distancing guideline says that you should, that you can be outside where other people are in common areas, that you should be masked and you should keep six feet away from people that are outside your bubble. And that's actually pretty manageable when it comes to birding. That's what people tend to do anyway, is you're, you're birding with the people that you're there to bird with. So, you go with those people, you hang with those people, maybe you wander off by yourself a little bit. That's fine, you're outside, there's plenty of fresh air. And, and you're not in any kind of a confined space and you're going to be wearing your, your face covering. So, you're safe there. And, but we will have guides that are stationed out at those places that, that they should be, at Hartney at High Tide and maybe out at Algenic. Maybe we'll have a scope set up with some antiseptic wipes next to it so that after you look through it, you wipe it down and stick that wipe in your pocket for the next person to have a clean scope. And then, you know, you move on. The one thing we're not able to do this year, which local people really didn't take advantage of much anyways, is we're not able to do the shuttles that we normally do.
Right, right.
So, instead, what we decided was kind of a neat thing to offer. And this will be neat for people that are here in Cordova for the festival and it'll be neat for people who are not able to physically be here. They'll, you'll be able to get this care package. And so, if you're a virtual participant, before the, the festival starts, if you register early enough, we will mail you this care package. So, as, you know, the first day of Shorebird Festival comes, you open that package and you have all these things in it that helps you kind of participate and feel like you're more involved in the festival even from afar. And if you're here in Cordova, you've got all these things that will help you have more of a, of a festival experience while you're here, even if we're not able to, you know, gather in one big group in one room. You'll be able to take the things that are in that box and, and put them on and use them and, and enjoy them as part of your festival experience here. And if you want to, to upgrade to that iHeart Cordova box, then, you know, whether you're experiencing the festival virtually from afar or you're right here in Cordova, you have a box full of goodies that's curated with all kinds of neat things from Cordova businesses. And so, we're going to be putting out a call for, for businesses to submit items for this box. And so, we're still working out the, the financial logistics of that. But what I hope can happen is that we can figure out what, how we can set up the pricing with that so that there is, we can pay the business a certain amount for the, the items that they're supplying for the box. And then that goes into the box and then the person pays us for the box. And so everybody gets to, you know, benefit from that. And the people that are getting it from afar get to bring home little pieces of Cordova with them from the festival.
Good. Well, you know, and it's interesting too, how you mentioned that there have been some silver linings in the midst of the pandemic. And I, I give Chamber credit in a lot of ways for opening people's eyes to this too, is the whole, you know, taking the virtual possibilities and making use of them when we don't have any choice, with an eye toward how can, how can we continue, how can we integrate this as things get back to more normal? Like for example, you mentioned people, you know, that, that can't come to Cordova, but you'd maybe love to have be a guest speaker on bird photography or bird identification or something like that. You know, you had an entire culture that was probably resistant, you know, you have a certain percentage of the population that was resistant to the idea of doing things virtually, whether it was telemedicine or lectures or, you know, any of it. And now with it, with us having to do so much that way, a chunk of that has been peeled off and people recognize, hey, you know, this really isn't, this isn't as bad as I thought. So it opens up, as, as you kind of alluded to, it opens up some doors for the future that, that in the long run will help the festivals, the shorebird festival, fungus festival, they'll come back better, just like you're trying to help the businesses come back better. And, and it's going to be interesting to, to see some of the, the possibilities, how this whole thing evolves. Again, the website is coppershorebird.com. If people would like to learn more, get registered, find out more of the details. And again, coppershorebird.com doesn't have the word river in it. And you can always find that through the chamber page too. Anything that we talk about with the chamber, the annual meeting, the shorebird festival, the candidate forum can all be accessed in some way through cordovachamber.com and/or their Facebook page. Kathy, let me get your impression on one other thing, since we've got some time here. Have you been able to follow, you obviously have new responsibilities with a bundle of joy there, but have you been able to follow how things have been going with the Cordova cash cards and, and determine if that's worked as well as, as everybody hoped that was in on the planning?
Yeah, as far as I know, the last update I heard was a month ago. In January, I heard that there was over a million dollars that was put on those cash cards. So over a million dollars in stimulus funds was shared from the city of Cordova to Cordova residents. And that money can only be spent with local Cordova businesses. And it was a bit of a process to, to make sure that those cards are only activated with Cordova businesses. So you can know with confidence that, you know, that money is not leaving town, at least not right away. And as of January, over 600,000 of that had already been spent. So we were over halfway there, you know, just within less than a month of those being out. And of course, holiday shopping is, is a big time and we were really encouraging folks to use it for holiday shopping. You know, it's, it's completely legal and, and fine if, if folks need to use those to, to pay their utilities or their, their bills. And by utilities, I mean CTC, CEC, they're not able to be used to pay for your city utilities because the city is not able to get those stimulus funds and actually put them in their own bank account, even if it's a pass-through through other people. But if, if you have to use them that way, totally understandable, go for it. But if you're able to use them in a way that supports these smaller businesses that maybe have been struggling more during this time, then that's even better. So an example, you know, during this, this pandemic, Shoreside Petroleum has, has, you know, been, been there for the community, been supplying gas for the community and the community is grateful for that. A lot of people have been still having to fill up their gas tank and maybe people haven't been driving as much as normal. So maybe their numbers aren't quite as high, but they are still selling gas. So that's great. And if you need to use the card to, to pay for some gas, that's great. But, you know, other stores like maybe Cordova Gear isn't, isn't getting as much traffic as it used to. Maybe the Netmop isn't as good, isn't getting as many people through the door. And maybe these businesses are struggling a little bit more and, and maybe it's, it's a good use of those funds to, to try to, to spread it out among as many of those small businesses as you can. So we were happy to see that happening.
Good, good. Well, and I mean, the, the model, the, the, the forecasting model for an outside dollar that comes in to a community is still, and I confirmed this with, with the mayor and the manager, that the best number everybody still has is that it may circulate seven times before it ends up being an Amazon dollar or something like that, which we never recommend you using anyway. But, you know, so there's, there's that, it, that $600,000 hypothetically, you, you multiply that by seven and that's how much commerce has been created as they pass from, from, you know, somebody spends it at a grocery store and then the grocery store puts that in the payroll and the person who receives that payroll uses it to get their groceries or to get some knitting needles or, or at, at one of our craft stores or something like that. And it just swings around and, and has, so the stimulus, the economic activity generated is, is multiplied beyond just what the actual numbers are. And to have that infusion pumped directly into the local economy is a pretty big deal, is, you know, given how, how strange a year last year was. Well, it's been a delight as always talking with both of you. Christie, any final thoughts on any of this as we wrap up?
You know, all I have to say is I'm just continually impressed by Cordova and the spirit of Cordova, our business owners, our residents, just the way that our community comes together. And I'm excited for our upcoming events, the, the annual meeting, the shorebird festival, the candidate forum. I, I just feel like we're opening up more doors, more conversations for our community to keep coming together. And it's just a pleasure to work within this, this beautiful community.
It really is. And, and it, it's amazing, as long I know, as, as we've been at it in our family, how that doesn't, it just, it doesn't seem to diminish, even over the span of for us almost 30 years. It's still, the, the innovativeness and the love for the community that, by the residents just continues to be a very special thing. Kathy, last word to you.
Well, I'm just going to, just going to pump those dates again. So we have the Cordova Candidate Forum, which is this Friday, February 19th, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And it's going to be on Facebook Live at facebook.com/cordovachamber, live at that time. Or you can catch it on the radio on Monday, the 22nd at 5:00 PM. Then we have our annual meeting, the Court of a Chamber Annual Meeting, which is also going to be virtual this year. And that's going to be on Tuesday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM. And again, you can catch that on Facebook Live or you can RSVP through our website at cordovachamber.com/annual-meeting or just go to cordovachamber.com/events or go to our Facebook page and click on our events and click on the annual meeting and do it through there. But if you RSVP, that'll get you the link to actually participate via Zoom so that you can dress up in all your favorite Cordova business supporting gear. You can, you can participate in the Chamber Challenge trivia game. But we're also going to be announcing the winners of all of these outstanding and business awards, including the Come Back Better Award, the Board of Elections results and all kinds of other exciting stuff. And then lastly, the Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival. We're in our 31st year this year. Unfortunately, our 30th anniversary fell on the year that a pandemic hit. So we didn't get to really properly celebrate 30 years last year. So now we're celebrating that we've been doing this for over 30 years. So we're excited to do that. And it's going to be a hybrid festival and it's on May 6th through 9th. So that's May 6th through 9th, 2021. And there'll be some in-person stuff and a lot of virtual stuff. And you can get more information on that at coppershorebird.com. And of course, you can always go to cordovachamber.com/events and click on the Shorebird button. That'll get you there too.
Ever the promotional powerhouse, Kathy, joined by Christie, who has acclimated very well to her role at the chamber as well. Thanks so much to both of you for joining us and we look forward to great things.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks, JR.
Kathy Renfell, Christie Banks from the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. We are delighted to have had them as our guests on the town meeting program. This show, by the way, will go up on our YouTube channel in case you joined it in the middle or want to hear it again or share it with somebody else, youtube.com/cordovatv. This show brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, which we continue to appreciate so we can bring you local talk radio here on KLAM. Thanks, Cordova Wireless. Everybody have a great day and we'll see you next time.